What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at how to play the button from twenty five big blind stack.
Button versus big blind huh?
No, button versus the table.
Okay.
Our button will be in position, meaning we're not against the line or versus open.
I like a jam here.
Yeah, right. I mean.
Get scanned. I usually call here.
Yeah. No, and we get it actually get a good flop for fives.
I would bet small.
Two, right?
Yeah, you could do one or two, probably two is the main frequency. I don't know, we're twenty five effective, maybe it is one. Maybe two.
You're using big sizes sometimes.
Uh, yeah, I mean, like if you've got pocket sevens, you're gonna have sevens and eights sometimes, I guess.
Yeah, six, sevens and eights probably wanna go.
Somewhere around five. I'm trying to think when they start jamming versus UTG one.
My guess was that there's no big size at all here, nothing. It's just too yellow, nothing else.
I imagine there would probably be maybe some, but maybe not. Like ace, ace five, probably, maybe? I don't know. Not really. You're right. Yeah, it's just basically small and smaller.
Ace four.
Yeah, ace four is feeling.
Doesn't make sense, right? We were thinking about like ace five or pocket six, pocket seven more than.
Yeah. Yeah, it does seem weird, right? I don't.
I would. I think it's because you can't like do a turn shove, right? Like even if you go half pot, it's still not good for turn shoving.
Maybe. I like, I, I go small here again.
What do you do with diamonds?
Uh. I don't wanna, okay, so if you go too big. You're gonna give some of his hands, the, the green light just to get, just to check jam on you, right?
What do you do if it's winter and you have just the ace and diamond?
Uh. I would probably bet small again.
Okay, so you go small with everything. I don't know, I'm going six here.
I just, I don't like six just because you completely block his calling range unless he's like slow playing an over pair or something silly. What can he? I'm just thinking like, what is he, uh, what, what, what calls six?
Do we go that big one, a four liner from Zen?
Well, it's not a four liner, it's just a paired middle card.
Oh, I'm, okay, I'm ready, yeah. And then. Um, I'm thinking we go six here because if you don't go six here, how are you gonna play for stacks on the river?
Yes, six, let's, let's just get it in.
And then you have some bluffs here, there are bluffs, I wanna go six today.
I mean, if you bet three, it's just a pot sized jam.
Yeah.
You have, you have top set, like you're not scared of anything, like the only thing you're losing to is fours here, just let him call with this, with this shit hands. And then whenever he goes on the river, if he adds something, he adds something.
I don't know, Bill, if river is like, yeah, okay.
There's nothing we're afraid of. We, we wanna, we wanna give him, give him some rip to hang himself.
He needs too strong to go six. That could, that could make sense.
Yeah.
No.
It's still, it's still sixes, but I mean, okay, it's in there some, but it's still sixes.
Yeah, six. And then. My guess was that there's just a blast wanna go six here?
Alright, so.
Yeah.
When you bet six, look at what his continue range is. And let's see if that like makes sense.
Well, first. Do you not wanna see how, what you bet six and what you don't bet six? My guess.
Yeah, yeah, we, we can do that.
Diamonds bet six a lot, but we don't have much diamonds here. That's very, very thin, right? So what is betting six here? It's like.
It looks, it looks like most of the range is betting six. It's almost like.
Queen, jack, all.
Hearts. I would expect diamonds to bet six, but I would expect to have the full diamonds, no? Our diamonds are mixing.
These threes are straight.
Alright, well. You could go for it with just the ace of diamond here.
Yeah. Sure.
Alright. And then. It's.
I was, I was, I was gonna say, look at his call range is what we were talking about.
Yeah, but it's tough to go out there with like king ten of spades and then, but they. Just because it's the motion, right? Let's see the calling range.
Alright, so continuing with his ace, his strong ace highs, just like a hundred percent frequency, so like ace queens, ace kings. You think ace kings continuing without a diamond? I mean, even if they have a diamond, ace king off.
Uh.
I think it just likes the east cuz there's a gut shot.
What about queen? Well, the queen, those are the flush draws, so I mean, those make sense.
I think the, the ranges are still so wide. I mean, we're, we're narrowing it down whenever we're betting six a lot, but with the flop going on two point two and call and the ranges are so super wide. Like there's just so much like Broadway stuff that we still have.
So I see, I, I, I see the equal aberm strategy here. I mean, this makes sense, right? So if they, if you bet six. They're supposed to continue, like you're getting value from all of these strong asex. Um, in game, do you think that they're defending? Ace queen of hearts to a, um.
It's still, yeah, yeah, I think that they might stick in another bet. Just to see if it's a nice.
Not against sixes. Not against six point one, I don't think.
That's kinda, that's kinda what I was, that's, well, I mean, that's what I was thinking, like, that's the reason I would have deviated in game, but I mean, this makes sense. If you think they're calling. If you think ace queen is calling six point one here, bet six point one for sure.
Uh.
Yeah, this is really about equity denial, right? Like ace queen has a gut shot and two overs. So it's very live against all of the value hands that we're doing here, will be a pocket eights or pocket nines or pocket queens.
Yeah, 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 I would be, I'd be on board with that, Peter, but we have a full house, so it's like.
Yeah.
I, I kinda wanna be like equity inviting.
Yeah, keep the fish on the line, I get it. I'm by nature, but.
Who else to, to say it?
Uh, I'm not gonna jam here, I'm gonna, I think five's okay and then like, I, I mean, verse cutoff. I'm less inclined to, to call kings.
Why? It's a perfect spot, no?
There's not as many squeeze opportunities behind, so.
What if there are bounties here?
Well, I mean, bounties, that would be more inclined.
You not mix there, fifty fifty?
I am flattening kings if it's like. Earlier positions, I think.
Against, okay, so how do you work it in your head? So EP, you're gonna flat kings a lot? And then against steel positions, you don't?
Well, so like some of the EV of a hand like this comes from people squeezing behind. That's like one of the benefits of flattening. So like the less squeeze opportunities behind. The less EV in this strategy, I think there is. Whereas like.
Two aggressive players in the blind.
Yes, if they're aggressive, like if you, if, if, if you got a green tag on the small blind here and he's a maniac, yes, I'm flattening here full frequency.
If you, if you don't have any tags.
Uh, I'm just gonna say there's not much of an opportunity here and I'm probably just gonna slot this into like my five, yeah.
Yeah, if there, there's three bet is under eight, maybe you can raise, but like if there are three bets over eight, you should flat a lot here.
I thought, I thought you were the, 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 the best at flat calling kings from the button.
I like flick, I mean, I, I flat from this stacked up a lot. It's just when ranges are wide, I'm, um. I don't know, I guess I put it in the three bed spot.
What happened there?
Bet small. Or do you check? Nah, I would bet small, I think.
Oh, that's small.
Either bet two point two or check.
I would. You just called and got an ace. I'm not betting second pair here. I think that EV of our hand now stands in him making a mistake.
It's, it's a lot better than second pair. Second pair is like. Ten X, Jack ten.
Yeah, but it's still one pair, right? And then.
Sure.
It's a like, I can, he checks back the flop, he checks back the turn. Now I think it's like, okay, we have to face reality. I think we're gonna have to do it ourselves. Yeah, I think, I think the question is, will this villain get in? Um, Jack ten to three streets.
No.
Two streets. Maybe two with a little bet here?
Is that just? Two point two.
Two's good.
No. You can bet the river.
The solver.
No, no, no.
Oh, he's got ace three, you're screwed, Louis.
One, well, you know how much I wanna raise her?
Yeah, so against population I'm raising, but I'll just gonna call versus this over.
No, I think you can raise four. I think it's a mistake not to raise.
You're, you're blocking the straight.
He, he could just be checking in ace all along, right? It's, it's not impossible, right? No, I think we still raise here. We can just call this guy and see what he's up to.
Raise, I think it's gotta be six. I don't think four is half pot, so.
Well, we got one street, it might just be one big line, but it's still better, no? I would just call. You can raise.
Let's just call. Yeah, that's just a call.
Think fine.
You weren't, you weren't getting paid anyways, right?
Yeah.
Um, I think some of these suited aces jam sometimes, but, um, I, I do a lot of calling.
There's no jamming at all here with any suited aces.
No? Okay. I hadn't looked at these ranges today, so I'm just gonna.
Your wheel ones don't jam, Louis?
My wheels, Peter, maybe it's four, maybe it's five, but it's like, ah.
We jamming like king jack suited, king ten suited.
Yeah, those, uh, you're definitely, you're definitely jamming some suited Broadway, hundred percent.
Are you, are you ever three betting this?
No.
Louis says these things with confidence, I'm, I just assume he's.
I feel like it's like an eighty, twenty, twenty.
Yeah, it's about what I was gonna say, Bill, it's like fifteen percent raise, I think.
Oh, look at this, Louis, come on now, come on. Ace five, ace two, ace eight.
I said those two. Right, but in general, look at the general suited a strategy, just call, right?
Yeah, that's what, I think that's what I said. Maybe I was a little more slanted towards raising, but.
These are high frequencies. This is the.
That's the power.
Oh, look at queen. Wow, never did that.
How about so question? No, I actually, I don't flat queens here ever. Or jacks, queens or jacks, I'm just not gonna do it. I haven't done it. My, my database is lacking.
It could be, it could be a nice.
So let me ask a question, Louis. If they're over folding, if you have a villain who is struggling. To defend versus your aggression, do you think the EV of flattening a hand like ace seven goes up or down? Compared to jamming?
Um, and we have position and this ace seven, I think, said, we're gonna make more money. Or I say, we're gonna make more money if we make the flush and we have, we're a bunch in here.
You know, everything you just said in that entire sentence, you could replace with king jack suited and the sentence would make the exact same sense.
No, this king jack suited is, you know, these hands are gonna struggle so much. They have like good, good raw equity, but we're never making it to the river.
We were in position.
You're in position, you got a good, strong hand, you can make the flush. It's, is it the exact same thing you said for ace seven?
No, because for me, these hands are just like you're trying to scam the other. Whereas this one, you just have an ace blocker, you have a good, like you, you know?
The thing about the suited Broadway's that are nice too is I think when you jam, if someone behind you wakes up with a hand. You still can flop, uh, well and do decently well.
No, no, I'm definitely on team jam here. I'm just asking the question, if you're playing against an opponent who's not defending appropriately. What do you think these hands prefer to do? I don't know the answer, I'm, I'm posing the question.
I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I think you raise more. For sure.
I would think maybe, but I.
But you don't, you have to be concerned at some, to some degree with the players in the blinds to like.
Sure.
If you jam ace eight and they wake up with a hand, you're pretty screwed, but if you jam like king jack suited, they wake up with a hand, you probably do a little bit better than you do with ace eight.
I think it's an interesting question. I'm gonna put it into HRC.
How about two point two here?
Other jams are gonna have an ace that are better.
I would check here.
Ace size.
Okay. Jack, Jack ten with a flush draw, you wanna bet big here, you don't wanna.
I, I was gonna say, Jack ten boards usually polarize. I don't think you polarize from imposition here.
Uh, not float bet versus late position, late position, late positions generally small float bets. The heuristic versus earlier positions, you size up some.
A little bit of big bets, but like in general, it's small bets. Just because of the scenario like them, so.
Simplification.
So check, check. We gotta know something now.
Yeah, you gotta go like, uh, five or eight.
Eight.
I mean, I go spot wing five here, that's ten, sixteen, it's a pot sized jam. Might go bigger. I go five though.
Five or check.
I'm checking.
Why turn the ace side into a bluff?
No, I'm checking again. You picked up equity, but like he's still gonna have a better hand than you a lot.
We bet flop.
Yeah, yeah, it's either check or large.
Oh, sorry, I was putting in something to HRC.
Wait, did you check flop? I'll pay your bet.
Yeah, look, six point seven, look, six point seven, Ken, he checked.
Chuck, why'd you check?
Eighty one percent, dude.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it, it does bet a lot.
Lot of stuff here, Ken, with one spade in my hand or anything really, but not a side?
Yeah, no, I could check, but you gotta bet turn.
Why, why do you have to bet turn?
You check twice and we wanna steal the pot.
But yeah. I think that if we had, um, like eight, six. It'd be more interested in bluffing than.
Well, here's another, no, here's another thing, like our ace high bluff here beats a lot of his continues that are gonna continue. His flush draws and straight draws, like the ace high is just ahead of a lot of stuff he's just gonna call with.
What do we do against a stuff here? Just have to fold, right?
Gotta fold, yeah, it's easy fold.
Yes, well, you have it to run, that's struggle against the rates.
But you can still get value from worse hands here when you bet, I believe. Let's look at that.
Value from worse. Yeah, you can definitely get called by some spades that are worse and some hearts that are worse. But you're just gonna have a hard time on the river.
Well, we're in position, how hard of a tie can we have?
Huh?
We're gonna bluff non-flush completing hands, probably. And non-straight competing, completing hands.
Okay, but I mean, like Jack ten nine.
This, I think we just jam. We unblock both flush draws, we block the straight, we got, I think you just ship it, dude, what are you gonna do?
Check? I wouldn't bet turn, I'm not even betting turn, I'm just.
Hey. Let's take a, let's take a look at bluffing ace eye on the river. It's there.
Yeah.
I mean, he does check all the boxes for the shove, like I don't hate the shove. Yeah. And also don't think top of the population's folding that though.
Really? You don't think population is folding a ten?
Not really. I think we get too sticky there.
I'm calling.
No, I think. What?
It's just a shove.
Did you say call, Ken? Why is that?
Because I can call, uh, if like one of the blind squeeze, I think this is just good enough to call off if the hijack folds. And if they both fold, I get to play a pretty strong end in position versus hijack.
You don't wanna jam here?
Nah.
Why not?
I don't think it's necessary.
It's too strong for jam?
It's gonna jam some, probably.
Yeah.
Our percent.
Alright.
I thought it was a little too strong.
Yeah.
Well, a hundred percent is just some, you know?
Does it call, what's it do with ace jack?
You guys see this?
Hey, you're running the aces.
Yeah, it's probably gonna shove ace jack a bit as well.
This cam has begun.
Ace jack, ace king, ace queen off suit dollar, gonna jam at some frequency there.
Right, what about this one?
This is a good flat.
Flat or three?
Yeah. No, you keep, you wanna keep worse kings and worse queens in.
Ah ha, you like this spot, you think? You wanna keep the worst kings in, right?
Yes, because the cutoff is wide enough that when you raise, you're only gonna face against ace king and ace queen and when you call, you keep in. Queen jack, queen ten, king ten, queen nine.
So what do you think that as a king here?
Uh, so probably by three bet bluffs are gonna come from the worst suited kings, like king seven, king eight. It's king seven, king six, maybe? Yeah.
It's shoving sometimes.
No, no, suited. King seven, king six.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
And then we can push our call.
Yeah.
I'm not pushing often enough here.
So I ran that spot, Louis. I tightened the opening range a smidge and I tightened the calling range a smidge. And what do you think happened?
You tighten the opening and you tighten the following range.
Mm-hmm, from the cutoff.
Okay, and then what? The question is for?
It was for the aces, the suited aces. They base, they basically all have jamming frequencies now.
They wanna jam all of them?
Most of them up to ace nine, it's mixing frequencies, it's a very competitive option at JPPV.
JPPV, you didn't use ICM?
No, 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 I didn't change it at ICM or anything, I didn't.
Why does RC loves these super aces so much?
I think they're just logical, I think they're just logical expansions. They have similar properties to like the suited wheels.
Alright, so the exploit was that.
So basically if.
Tighter and then the blind.
So. Yeah, so I didn't mess with the blinds, the blinds are equilibrium. If the cutoff is opening a little bit tighter, he's a little nittier. And he's calling off a little bit tighter, he's a little bit nittier. You can, you can. It starts preferring to jam a lot of the suited aces, particularly the wheelie ones.
Yeah, that was what we looked at when we were at, we did the twenty big blind study.
Yeah.
Those, those aces are very frisky.
Do we wanna bet here?
High frequency check, maybe a low frequency bet cuz you have a heart, but I'm checking.
Yeah, ace with two wheel cards, very low, very low frequency bet board, so it's a check with the best.
I have a, I have a question. We haven't looked at this, but like. I, I'm sure we, some of us have just an idea of this, but like when the cutoff opens the button. How many asex are we really flattening here compared to three betting? Like I feel like we should be three betting or jamming a lot of them.
Nah, we got ace jack, we got ace jack off and down pretty much.
Land effective, man.
You got ace jack?
Ace jack, ace ten, you got ace five suited, ace jack up to ace jack suited.
We have all this. They have all the suited aces at some frequency except for ace king, maybe an ace queen.
Ace nine, ace nine, ace jack.
Maybe I'm just, I'm jamming a lot of ace jack here.
Ace jack.
Sure. Off is fine, but.
But ace ten suited, you don't jam?
Yeah, probably not, right?
Ace jack suited, I don't think you jam either, man. Think you jam the absolute one? Sure, all day.
Yeah.
I mean, his range is still pretty wide. He's got more aces than us for sure, right? I mean, that's, that's what you're getting to, but he's got a lot of other stuff too.
He's jacked.
Yeah, I'm basically just trying to sort out what the balance of aces are here, like how good is an ace high flop for us, button versus cutoff? And I mean, it's, it's, it's reasonably okay.
I think the, the rule of thumb generally is in these cutoffs or button flats, um, equities run are often kind of close-ish, like fifty fifty.
Yeah.
Aren't they?
Yeah, that's why cutoff checks a lot, um, because they don't really have a big equity advantage.
I'm wondering if we bluff spade, like if we have a single spade more or a single heart, like I don't know if a single spade wants to realize, probably not.
So we have a smidge more equity in position and that's. Why, why, why would that be?
Oh, Louis, this is an important thing, you're doing it after he checks on this specific flop.
Oh, yeah, that is gonna, that is gonna affect things.
And that's why we bet small, when he, when he fails to bet, then that often means, you know, he's kept himself slightly, so we then take little stabs.
Yeah, Nick's right, or I'm sorry, Tim's right, yeah, it is basically equal equities.
And you see that across a wide range of flops. You don't have huge advantages and that's part of why both sides play kind of cautiously against the other.
So how often is cutoff supposed to check here? Only half the time?
Yeah.
Seems. Like he's betting a lot more than I would have thought.
No, he's checking seventy five percent.
Oh, okay, there we go.
Okay. I was thinking the same thing, Ken.
We bet fifty percent once checked too, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, that, I think that's what we were looking at, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, I think we can get away with a better small percentage of time with back to hearts if you wanna bluff off our stack, but I'd be happy to just call honestly or check back this hand.
Yeah, king queen is like an ideal check back hand, right? This is the.
Pretty good. Bluffing.
It's, it's the rule, it's the best unpaired hand, right? That usually gets spotted into a check range.
Yeah. Probably all five of spade though.
And like might be closer to betting for value than betting as a bluff.
We're basically trying to steal the steal.
Steal the steal.
Yeah. So Louis Beth here with all this thing.
Uh, I would probably play check here to be honest in game. I wouldn't be surprised to see minor bet frequencies though, at equilibrium.
Yeah, I, I'm with Galen. Usually check the, the best unpaired hands.
I think having a heart gives us a little bit, a tiny bit of betting frequency, but.
A, a little streak, streak cred, right, Ken?
Yeah.
Not really.
Well, I mean, you're checking.
That's kinda your spades bet the most, hearts bet a little without either than you really don't bet much at all.
Yeah, yeah. If you have a heart or a spade, it's, the, the frequency is a little elevated.
That's what I learned from all of these flush draw boards is that you can't really, like the range bets disappear. Your strategy is heavily based on the shoe. While we have the king of heart, do we not? We could maybe.
Thirty percent of the time, you bet every time.
What is it? Queen of heart and then, no, king of heart, queen of clubs? There's a, there's nothing. Majority check. Ten on the turn. Hmm, I like that.
Hmm, do we?
Yeah, I'm back. We're just gonna check back cuz we don't get a better king to fold, there's no such thing.
Start getting small pairs.
What are we trying to bluff him off of? You think he's gonna fold like pocket fives? I'm not excited about trying to get him off of pocket fives.
I think if anything, his checks picked up equity on a ten, like a lot of his checks on the flop probably contain a ten, which would check on the turn.
But not only that, we got the best showdown here. Uh, if he, if he doesn't have an ace and it goes to king R, we win.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Bet small.
We're in position.
No, we're gonna bet a bit more. He's kind of established that he has showdown now. The reason why we weren't bluffing before was because he had a bunch of like medium one pair hands, he has pocket sevens, he has ten X.
Um, I'm betting like, I wanna bet small just to maybe induce bluffs.
Four?
Yeah, I don't really wanna go much smaller than like four here. We revert like just a monster.
What about ten?
Yeah, I'm just there.
I think, where he's gonna call, he's gonna turns king and spades into a bluff and we're gonna stack them.
Yeah, I'm kinda with Ken. I like to, I would bet two point five in game, I think.
Too small in position, we're not allowed to do that.
Yeah.
All in.
Yeah. Yeah, when it comes to check, 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 check. Well, I wanted to go over bad, but when I, then you see the flush or like, yeah. He's only gonna call the ten with the flush, right?
Alan, I feel like your instinct like. Alan, I feel like your instinct, like, eh, let's just bet half pot and get called is a, uh, like an exploit for small six opponents who are like. Probably, I mean, he could be bluffing. I'll just call with any one pair.
It probably is. It's not, it's not a balance. Yeah, i- i- it's not a balanced strategy at all.
But then you're disgusted when he shows up with a set that we play like admit or two pair that's gonna call, you know?
I, I've never seen a person in a, uh, in a ten dollar game play check, 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 check with a set.
It's very boards. Rare, it's rare.
I've seen, I, I've seen one. His name is Gavin. Then what do you do here?
I think it's a pretty mandatory three bet. I think we wanna trap better hands, not this hand.
So. What's your calling frequency here?
I haven't studied these, but I will say.
To trap Tim, to trap, trapping you.
Slow.
Trapping you.
Seven percent? A zero percent?
Ten percent. I mean, maybe for balance, but like, nah, not really.
Fifty fifty. I think it's higher than that.
Oh, well, yeah, five big lines. What are you, why do you guys wanna trade that so much? We're pretty strong here. It's time to be in it.
And I like, uh, you can try it with this sometimes and hope one of the blinds wakes, like squeezes. And then you just call it off.
I think it might even be lower than fifty.
A majority call? Unless it comes like Ace King something, I mean.
Crazy. Can we see, can we see our strategy?
But if it comes Ace King something in his calling range and you jam, it's gonna have a lot of asex and king accents, so you're gonna lose the pot a lot anyway.
I do have a question, Louis. Do you have like twenty-five percent of the field charts with GTA Wizard?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
Why don't you, uh, just, just for giggles, why don't we compare the strategy with like those hands when you, uh, apply a smidge of ICM?
I think this particular hang, I, I mean, it might call Kings more and Queens less.
That's what I'm thinking too, Ken. That's exactly what I'm thinking. But I, I, I don't know. Like, I'm just kinda curious how it may affect the strategy when we start getting a little deeper into a tournament, you know? Like thirty-seven, twenty-five, somewhere in there, I think are both reasonable look at, if you can find a symmetric arrangement.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, just look at, just look at the symmetric one.
Yeah, click symmetric. There you go. Have a twenty-five.
Yeah, you got a twenty-fiver, so you can compare it one to one.
It was, it was UTG plus one opens, right?
UTG one, I think was the opener and then we're looking at the button. So we've now shifted to a pure men raising strategy with the top of our range.
You don't have anymore.
And you're not ripping anymore. Which is kind of, so I mean, I guess it's a, it looks like, I guess it's just a little less polarized. It's a little more like stabby.
Look at this though.
Yeah, yeah.
Basically, we're at a late reg, but not in the money yet, right?
Twenty-five, yeah, twenty-five, so twelve percent of the field is usually what they pay, so you, you're approaching, right?
Yeah, yeah, you're definitely approaching. You're starting to feel it.
Right.
I think a lot places, a lot, a lot of online sites are playing, paying fifteen percent now, aren't they?
Sure.
They make summer of ten still too. Look, I'll pay, before you move, I wanna point something out. Look at all those bottom pairs that you're gonna just call with that aren't in range.
I know.
Yep.
I know, but it's not only that. It's, uh, everything else too. I've been jamming my Queen Jack suited on the bubble forever.
Me too, I honestly, well, not a good sign to go one on that, first of later positions, like cutoff, maybe.
Now, I would be, it may just be the fact that under the gun one is the opener and you have to be a little more respectful. Like, if you move him around the, the horn, you're gonna, yeah, okay. Yeah, so if it's like a hijacker cutoff, yeah, you can still, it's competitive, right? It's competitive.
Yeah, uh, yeah, against CP, I mean, I don't really jam my Queen Jack suited.
You just need to be a little more respectful, I think is the, uh, message there.
So we did it. We went with the flag call and sure enough, karma comes back to bite us. And we get a flop with a flush draw and we don't have a card of this.
Hey, we're in position, call one.
Yeah, definitely call one. We're not folding.
Think we're gonna call more than one.
Ooh. I mean.
Okay, so King I board, we're supposed to overfold, right? But then we're pretty happy here. We have a heart.
So my problem is when I see a card peel on the turn that. I know that he should know that's better for a caller than a better opener. Like, we have way more sevens than he should have bet barely. Like, I, I, I get overly sticky here.
We don't have that many sevens.
I don't think so.
Seven, eight, seven, nine, seven, a seven.
When he, when he barrels a card that's not good for him, doesn't that mean you should fold more instead of getting more sticky?
Mixing, we are, but we're pretty high up in our value range here.
I would say, so what I'm saying is.
Probably gonna call here.
A hand that would still wanna barrel here is maybe like a flush draw. Like, if he has like an ace ten of hearts, that might be a hand that double barrel.
Not having a spade is probably good here for us.
I would say probably. I don't know, actually.
Have a heart.
Having a heart's probably bad, right? If you want it to be barreling hearts.
It's good, we can call him with the heart.
I would definitely call one more street here is kinda what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not really, it's. It's not even really that close. Like, I mean, it's one point five seven, which is, you know, that's pretty like in there.
Heart, one point three four, no heart, one point five six.
Hey, hey, look at this, Louis. This is interesting. Look at Jax, look at the EV of Jax compared to Queens. Like, Jax is better than Queens. Why do you think that is?
I don't know, because it looks like having a Jack here is pretty bad to look just at the general hands, but.
I guess his bluffs probably contain more Queen X, maybe. I don't know.
Yeah, he's gonna be bluffing the Queen of Spades and the Queen of Hearts at a higher frequency than the Jack.
Frequently, yeah, more frequently, that's right. He's just got more raw combos of bluffs with Queen X. So the EV of Jax and Queens are similar, but you block more bluffs if you have the Queens, which is kind of a, an interesting little nuance.
Well, yeah, he just has less Jax than Queens in range, right?
Right, so having.
That thing, right?
Yeah, yeah, so it's better to have Jax than Queens here because he's more likely to have a bluff if he's got Queens.
He's bluffing less Jax and he's bluffing, simple as that.
But we're still calling both pure, so it's really like.
Yeah, 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 uh, it's just a little nuance. You're right, like. Now I would check.
For sure. Happy days.
Yeah, check back and win sometimes. Not this time.
But there's a, there's a perfect example of a time where Queens ran into aces and we didn't get stacked.
At twenty-five effective, at twenty-five effective.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty crazy, right? Like, I would be, I would be steaming if I was that guy with aces.
Is gonna bet some, but he didn't go for it.
This is a call. This is a good call.
Yeah, good call for nine eight suited.
He also lets us go for a bluff with a missed flush draw there too.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, he's definitely checking, checking a call, not checking.
I know, we're, we're having a conversation.
We could bet.
I actually like barreling this one just because nine eight, nine eight has some backdoor equity and we get tons of better stuff to fold.
I don't like.
And we're supposed to find a fair number of stabs when he checks. I'd like to have like a Jack X, something with more interactivity a little bit, but you know, what are you gonna do?
I will, I will say like having a nine and an eight is probably blocking some of the folds, but.
No, 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 it's, it's not about that. It's about this scenario here. This is the pretty bad board.
Three point seven or check.
We don't have.
But Louis, you're, you're just looking at the board and not the action. He checked, so like he has hands like Ace, eight of clubs. That we want that to try and get put pressure on. He has hands like pocket sixes that we wanna put pressure on, like.
Right.
Tim's gonna struggle to win if we don't start betting it now. I don't mind checking, but we gotta.
Similar arrangements, we bet like half of the time, so you know, we gotta find some bets here.
If it was Queen, Jack, four, I'd be all, all for it.
Queen, Jack, four is easy, you got a gutty.
Or whatever, you know, whatever other type of board than King I. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
No, but I mean, you can't just say King High. It's a King High that he declined to bet. That's just like hugely important here. If he bet, he might just be folding.
It's a lot of slam dog pepper. You get off the bed at some times.
Yeah, I'm still, I'm still betting this here.
I think three point seven is probably the right size.
Okay, they're not so bad. I thought it would be worse, really. Like, they're mostly checks, right? Actually. Like Ace.
Sixty percent.
Ace, hang on, let's do it like that. Um. These are amongst the board we checked the most. The, the board was checked the most clearly monotone.
It just seems to be highly coordinated high cards.
Checking, yeah.
Highly coordinated high cards.
Yeah.
So like, the fact that it's rainbow is a, it's a check for us to bet. The fact that it's two face cards is a check against. Like, I think the equity is gonna be competitive between bet and check here.
Okay, I'm just checking here.
Yeah.
This is a King I board.
I went too big, but this is one of our worst hands too, I think.
Yeah.
That's true, this is one of our worst hands.
You got nine, one, eight, nine, nine, three, like checking's fine. I, I do bet this a lot in game though. And I bet small.
Yeah, no, no bigger than third of a pot here.
Yeah, I went a little big. I thought we might size up a little bit versus in earlier position, but maybe the SPR changes that a little bit.
It, it's gonna size up when you have more direct equity turns. When you, like, you're just looking to fold air here.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, Louis, go back to nine eight suited. There's an interesting thing there. Um, I have a strong hypothesis about why nine eight of diamonds is so interested in betting and I think it's because. We block the suited combos of King X and Queen X. It's the back door that also blocks a bunch of King X and Queen X suited. So he's less likely to be slow playing like a, a King nine, a Queen nine.
King nine of diamonds.
Exactly.
Yeah, you're blocking more likely combos, right? So interacting with the bottom flush is better because it's a more relevant blocker.
Okay, yeah. And of course, we still have the back door. You know, sometimes it still goes diamond, diamond and we revert flush.
Intelligent comment there, Tim. Good job. That's good. Those are, those are the nuggets I really appreciate these days.
We've seen that combo, that logic apply a lot and I never understood why until now.
Yeah, yeah, it's good, right, Scotty?
Backdoor mattered, yeah. Good job.
I, now that we checked, I'm, I'm kinda like washing my hands of this, this situation. Like, I, I'm not gonna probe, like, his, his checks picked up equity at this point and.
Oh, man, but he just like, he just has pocket seven sometimes.
Even if, even if we bet, I feel like. Even if we bet, I think I would give up here, honestly.
Alright, so, so I got a question.
Checks, I'm ready to take a stop.
Alright, so what kind of hands in our range? Is he gonna be folding to here? Like, okay, so what, what in your range is threatening that checks the flop and bets the turn on this?
Queen Jack, Ace Jack.
Queen Jack.
Nine, we have some fun hands here.
Well, we're checking back King X too. We're not betting like pure our, like King X on the flop either. It's like, we still have, we have everything still.
I, yeah, I don't. Yeah, I don't know, man. I, um, I've kinda washed my hands of it. Maybe I'm, I'm missing term probes, so maybe this is one of the spots that. I could benefit from, uh, betting.
So I think the thing to keep in mind here is that both of our ranges have, um, just like downgraded so much. So like, it's not all about top pair at this point after it's gone check, check, check. Um, like second pair is a strong hand. So like any Queens that we checked back flop with, they're pretty strong. They, they need to bet for value.
I don't see it like that. It's more like we played a, a hand similarly where we picked up like a gut shot a couple of hands ago. It's just a stab. It's, we're just trying once and if it doesn't work, we're trying to steal the steel. It's just that.
Okay.
With on the.
I would, uh, I would, I would point this out. Betting this turn is as attractive, if not less attractive than betting the flop.
I prefer to bet this turn a lot than betting this.
I'm just, I'm just saying EV wise, like the whole range, like there, there's not a difference here compared to like betting the flop compared to this.
Yeah, right, they're both mixing heavily.
You base two checks.
Yeah.
Well, it's more attractive. You go from seventy percent checking to fifty percent checking.
I'm not, I'm not talking like globally from the range. I mean, that's just the nature of the scenario. I'm, I'm just talking the EV of this specific combo.
In my mind, like, like a little stab. You stop once and that's it.
I like a little, I like a little stab on the flop, though.
Yeah, but it was not. Like, uh.
Alright, I'll, I'll.
Seventy percent check, sixty percent check, whatever, right?
Alright, here you are.
This is not the hand I wanna keep blasting off with.
I mean, we've stabbed and we've stabbed again. You block a bunch of Jack X, you block a bunch of seven X.
We checked flop, we stabbed.
Louis checked flop, he refused to bet.
So, are you gonna, are you gonna? Where we have to bet river.
I would think, I think if you bet the turn, you gotta bet the river on this kind of a card. I don't like it at all, but.
Well, do you not think go on in a little bit sometimes?
I don't think you have to go all in. I don't think you have to go all in at all. And I think it's probably not preferred. I, I think like. I think four is too small, so maybe seven or ten?
Test, 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 test.
My hearts are gonna go for that type of value.
Yeah, good morning, Danny. It just.
Oh, my god, you, the absolute, you.
Why are you fun thing, Danny?
We blame you, Danny.
Well, at least.
Guys, what is, what is the nuts on this, on this river? It's hearts, therefore what do you wanna have?
Do we have the straight anyway?
No.
We had second pair, second pair, you got owned.
Okay, just done.
I like jamming this combo.
Mostly jammy screen off. We saw that already.
And I like jamming that comma almost any stage of the tournament, almost.
First, I agree. I agree.
Just call.
Play calling here is the attractive option, I think, the most attractive. I'm continuing.
Yep.
I don't know.
Hard or spade?
Unlearn again. We don't have suit interaction.
It's the disrespectful bets.
I feel offended.
Yeah.
He thinks he can get away with one point three five. He's got another thing coming.
You wanna look at Ace nine of diamonds, maybe?
Ace nine, I think so slam dunk, to be honest. What about half a big blind?
He's nine of diamonds.
I threw another chip at him. At his head.
Yeah, 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 seven.
Alright, so it's drawing the line when you can make a better second pair essentially, like. But, okay, cool. Alright, so I'm micro three betting this, but I think it's a call. Yeah.
Yeah, I over three bet this.
I bet small.
Ooh, I'm checking.
Yeah, is it?
I'm talking to myself now. I'm gonna bet one big line.
I kinda like betting one. It's a paired board. It's, it's connected around a calling range more than an opening range.
Worst they signs.
I would bet seven, six, six with my ten, my ten eye straight draw, where if I have a spade, where if I had a heart. But right now, I think we've got a pretty good hand. We don't really wanna get check raised off of yet.
I'm betting one.
Yeah, I'm checking it to both. I like. You get a better ace high to fold?
Now you can't.
Bet one?
I'm not betting now, like, there's a lot of like equity stuff that picked up.
Okay.
I'm just gonna, I, uh, I don't know. Do you, do you call this?
Hold, hold, no.
Alright, hey, before you go, just out of curiosity, if you adjust it for ICM, like, let's say twenty-five percent of the field. What do you think this hand prefers to do?
Folding pre flop?
Oh, I don't think it folds pre flop. That's pretty nitty. I, I don't know, though.
It might start to three bet a little bit rather than pure call. Might I so?
I think it might three bet more, but I don't know, right?
And what was the question?
I don't know either.
So if you add a risk premium, like twenty-five percent of the field left or something, do you think this hand still prefers flattening?
I would three bet.
Hmm.
I think it's going to slant. Towards three betting a little bit more, so like twenty-five symmetric, twenty-five. And it was like cutoff button, I think is what we were looking at or.
Yep.
Yep, that's right.
It might start jamming.
I don't think it'll jam. I, I don't think this is the combo you wanna jam. You, you. I don't think it'll jam. I, I don't think this is the combo you wanna jam. You, you'd probably wanna like lean on the suited stuff, I think, if you're jamming, because you want the extra equity.
Maybe ace jack off some.
Cut off, Louis.
Button opens, buttons response. So it's still a full frequency three bet.
Well, no, 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 see. Call the other.
That's, that's, see, Tim, it's flipped now. Like before, when it's chippy V, um, it's a full frequency call. Now that we've added a risk premium to this situation, it's a full frequency three bet.
Yep.
Like you're just not flattening a lot here now. Um, and to your credit, yeah, ace, jack is where it starts picking up in ace, queen, Ken.
But because you have so many less jams with your best value hands, like ace, king, ace, queen are not jamming here, you just have a much more robust uh uh three betting range that is micro three bet.
It honestly, it's really just hams hamstringing in the calling range, so like.
So you see this here though? I, I think you're doing this the other way around. Twenty-five percent of the field left, you get to not slow play anymore.
Yeah, I know. I'm a, I'm a criminal for that. I am, I'm a, I'm a dirty criminal, I know.
I think it's like, if you wanna check yourself though, like you could still slow play aces more, you know, like.
I can't, Tim, I can't help it. I'm an addict and I will flat aces till the day I die.
I think that's fine. I think flattening kings is uh scary.
It is scary.
Hope he couldn't fold the ace ten. He had to change his answer to see what the guy had.
So, I mean, if you wanna get a little out of line here, I feel like maybe a three bet here sometimes, but yeah, just a folds, right?
Yes. That's a spicy meatball.
That's why I said a little out of line. Maybe it was a lot of out of line.
Oh.
Ah, oh, ah, what is this?
Ace queen, James, ace jack calls.
It's too early position.
Maybe if it was the high jizzle, you could do it.
Yeah, cut off, cut off your jam all day.
I think it's still calls versus cutoff.
Wow. Do you?
Yep.
This is shocking.
Kinda wanna check this back.
I mean, if we're calling preflop, I kinda am with you.
I'm betting that we can make a jack high straight. We got two overs. We could be ahead. So someone was calling range. We can get better hands to fold, turn and river.
So, what, Ken, what are you doing versus check raise?
Folding.
Okay, so.
See, yeah, can you say you can get called by worse? That's true, but only a little bit. You have like a little bit of worse aces with backdoors and stuff. I think we tend to get folds from hands we're ahead of and we tend to get called by hands that are ahead of us and I don't like that.
So what I'm gonna say is we get to float bet roughly fifty percent of the time here, and I think this exact hand's gonna bet about fifty percent of the time.
I don't hate that. Yeah, I don't hate that, Ken. Honestly, I don't hate that. I lean towards checking cuz this is, I'm gonna slot this into like a hand I wanna protect its equity at this point. It's vulnerable, but.
Other, other stuff.
We block, we unblock, we block, we have the hearts and spades as well, which is really nice, I think.
I don't, I, I don't hate your answer, Ken. Honestly, I think it's very reasonable.
King, jack, queen, jack, jack, ten, jack, nine.
I just slot this into like, if, if the pot stays small, this can still win it showdown.
Yeah, so I mean, there's an argument to be made for betting small here, but checking is ob, is the most competitive option.
And it's, and it's a value bet.
Yep. Alright, so, alright, so I do wanna size up a smidge here. Yeah, I do. Do you think we're more inclined to size up with the heart or without the heart?
Five. If it. At this stacked up.
Blasting. I think without the heart, you go a little larger.
I kind of, I agree, I agree with you guys. I think if you don't have the heart, you'd be incentivized to bet maybe like more five point five.
I see. And I think it flips a bit more like S P R like ten, it would be a different.
Yeah, I, I can agree with that, I think.
Crazy for me.
Alright, so like if you follow the logic, let's see. Alright, so the combos with the heart.
Does it matter? Like what? We just block some of his check raise?
It doesn't seem, it doesn't seem to matter much.
Cause the ace of hearts is there. It's like.
Honestly, I'm, I'm presenting this more as like a thought experiment to kinda understand how it works. Not as like an implementable thing like you need to be doing in game.
There's slivers of bigger bets without the heart.
Yeah. It's more of just trying to understand how the solver's organizing here.
Yeah, it, it, I don't think it matters. We made top pair, you know, best kicker that we call with.
Yeah, very similar, right? We're not playing the hearts anymore. We're just playing that top pair.
Yeah, you're right. And I, I wonder if it wasn't like, I think the ace of hearts probably just kind of kills the uh, the difference. Like uh, if we were dealing with something else where the ace of hearts was still alive, maybe it would matter more.
Yeah, like if we turn the jack and spades here.
Yeah, yeah, that's kinda what I'm thinking, right?
Okay. Blasted, you fold.
Uh, same story. I think it calls a lot, but if you wanna get a little out of line, you can click the raise button.
Yeah, you can fold this here too, probably.
You think? I, I don't know if I'm folding king ten versus a late position open.
I'm following.
I don't think there's many calls.
Okay.
Ooh.
Maybe I'm a little stickier here than I need to be, cuz I, I, I was thinking it's gonna be like minor three bet, full frequency call.
King, jack would be a good one.
Yeah, king, king, jack is definitely a good one, right?
Yeah, king tends, king tends the bottom of his opening range.
I think he's got some king. Well, he's definitely got some suited ones that are worse, but.
Yeah, suited ones, but not offsuit.
Is he opening king nine? Maybe not.
Twenty-five big blind, we don't bluff. That's the thing.
I know.
Well, you keep, that, you keep talking about three betting preflop. But twenty-five migs, man, you don't really bluff.
In chippy V land, right? I was gonna say in chippy V land. Maybe if you like, look at like fifty percent of the fields even. Like, so you get like a decent balance. I'd be curious.
Would you?
Kinda. I mean, aren't you a little curious?
Yeah, I bet it starts getting in there with even fifty percent.
Like fifty percent is about, like seventy-five is like almost.
Thirty-seven. When was the last time you looked at thirty-seven percent of the field?
Not very often, right? So, same story. We wanna look at. Alright, so now like look at this strategy, how like drastically different at twenty-five it is. Like you're right, at twenty-five chippy V, we're just incentivized to run equity and jam. We don't care. But like, there's a lot more nuance here when you start three betting smaller.
Louis, can you change to hijack open?
Hijack, hijack.
Sorry to interrupt.
And I almost feel like we should just be studying like the fifty percent charts, like as the standard.
I don't wanna drive the train, Tim, but that's where my mind has been for a very long time.
Because they're just so different and we just like, if you late reg a little bit and like these, this is the tournament you're playing. You're never playing chippy V.
Well, I've always thought like, I don't know too many situations where I'm playing twenty-five big blind chippy V unless it's a speed, like a speed racer. Okay, sure. Or like some kinda like short turbo deal, but like typically if you're twenty-five effective at the table, there's gonna be some kinda risk premium in play.
So on the left, pure chippy B, on the right, fifty percent of the field left.
Right, so like.
When like, and that, those things that we were just looking at, like how frequently you're flooding queens from certain positions and like at fifty percent of the field remaining, which is not a high C M spot, it's just gone.
Yeah, when you start caring about the payouts at all, like the strategy does kind of shift quite a bit at twenty-five, huh?
Man, it's crazy. Yeah, I like, I haven't, I've only like been looking at these sporadically. I haven't like sat down and studied these, um, it's.
Well, I'm, I'm glad GTA Wizard got them, cuz I mean, I've been looking at some of this stuff when I had a pre-flop academy pretty frequently, trying to compare some of these ranges. But um. Yeah, it's pretty interesting.
Alright, well.
We've done, we've done it. Here we are, Louis.